Good evening and welcome to the March 28, 2024 Meeting of the Falmouth Zoning Board of Appeals. I'm going to ask everyone in the audience to take a moment and silence their cellphones, and please note that this meeting is being taped by FCTV. I'd like to start by introducing members of the Board of Appeals. Starting at the audience's left and moving to the right is Gerald Potamus, who is an associate member; Frank Duffy, who is a full-voting member; Mark Fineran, who is a full-voting member; my name is James Morse, I'm a full-voting member; we have Suzanne Murphy, who is a full-voting member and currently serving as our clerk; Scott Peterson, who is our vice chairman; and Tony Petrucci, who is an associate member. We're also joined this evening by Noreen Stockman, our zoning administrator, and Ashley DeMello, our recording secretary. The Zoning Board of Appeals is charged with applying the state zoning statutes as well as the town zoning bylaws in reviewing and voting on applications. All decisions are made through the public hearing process. Our goal is to hear testimony from the applicants and to allow for a full and fair discussion of a project prior to rendering a decision. To begin each hearing, the clerk will read the pertinent announcement for the hearing and read pertinent information from the file. The applicant or the applicant's representative will then have 15 minutes to make a presentation. Time may be extended by vote of the board. The board will then question the applicant. Next, the public will be invited to comment. Public comment should be directed at the project and can include an opinion in favor of or in opposition or to ask a specific question regarding the project. Comments should be limited to two minutes. The chair may limit discussion in the interest of time if comments become repetitive. All members of the public wishing to speak should wait to be recognized by the chale. Come to the podium. Please state your name. For the record, please speak into the microphone. It does not amplify your voice, but is provided for the benefit of FCTV viewers. The board may continue the hearing to a future date and time. Otherwise, when the board is satisfied it has enough information to make a decision, the hearing will then be closed. Once the hearing is closed, no further testimony will be taken. The board will then discuss the proposal amongst themselves and make a motion to approve or deny the application. The motion will be followed by a summary of key findings and conditions. The affirmative vote of four members, a supermajority, is required for the approval of special permits, variances, or appeals. A split vote, three to two, is a failure to carry and would result in a denial. Any Zoning Board of Appeals decision may be appealed as provided for in Mass. General Law, Chapter 40A, Section 17. First up on this evening's agenda is public comment. Good evening.
My name's Elizabeth Seito. I'm with the Falmouth Enterprise, and I'm recording with my phone. I just have to, by law, let everyone know.
Thank you, Elizabeth. Does any other member of the public who wishes to record tonight's event, please just come to the podium and just be recognized by the chair, just disclose the fact you're close, you'll be recording. First up on tonight's agenda is public comment. This public comment is reserved for anything that is not specifically on tonight's agenda. Is there any member of the public who wishes to make a comment about anything that is not on tonight's agenda? Seeing none. We have two requests for continuances this evening. I'm going to take those out of order. First is 01424 Pieri, 196 Metoxit Road, Ocoy, requesting a special permit to raise the existing dwelling, demolish a portion of the existing dwelling, construct additions, and relocate the existing detached structure and shed. I believe we have a request for a continuance. Noreen? Do we have a date that they've requested it to? May 23?
Yes, so the applicant has requested a continuation, and we selected the date of May 23, 2024, for the hearing date.
Is the applicant having a representative, or are they pro se?
They are not here today.
Is there a motion to continue this hearing to May 23?
So moved.
Mr. Fineran, second. Any discussion? All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Anyone opposed? To vote. Continue to 5:23. The second request is 01624 Sharma, 15 Dillan's Way, East Falmouth, requesting a special permit to convert the existing detached pool house into an accessory apartment. Do we have a date?
So we also have a request for the hearing to be continued. We are looking to continue to a date in May, and council, do you want to confirm? We have a date, is it May 11? Oh, excuse me, April 11?
Yeah, that should work just fine.
Okay.
Is there a motion to continue to April 11?
You may have to just amend that form, too.
Give it to Mr. Fineran. Is there a second?
Second.
Give it to Mr. Peterson. Any discussion on the motion? All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Continuance to 4:11. There's discussion about taking the other two new hearings out of order. Still a motion?
That's a motion.
Is there a second?
Mr. Me, second.
Any discussion? All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye, all right. So first up will be 013-24 Perez/Munson, 92 Priscilla Street, East Falmouth, requesting a special permit to remove the existing deck and construct an addition at the rear of the dwelling, increase lot coverage by structures.
So tonight, we have Vivian Patricia Perez and John Byron Munson, 18 Eastland Road, Jamaica Plain, apply to the Zoning Board of Appeals for a special permit pursuant to Section 240-102A and 240-113A4, Dakota Falmouth, to remove the existing deck and construct an addition at the rear of the dwelling. Subject property is 92 Priscilla Street in East Falmouth. And from town boards, building department, no comment. Engineering. Number one, this application was reviewed for impacts to public rights away and public utilities. Priscilla Street is a public right-of-way in this area. No alterations are proposed to the right-of-way. Any changes within the right-of-way will require filing a permit with the engineering division. Two, any connections or alterations to public utilities will require permission from the appropriate town department. Three, the project must not direct any stormwater runoff to public property, abutters of public rights away. Four, a drywell is proposed for the new roof, as we typically recommend. Five, where this is a small lot and the proposed work is close to abutting properties with the existing fencing, proposed work area, location, and lot grades, it appears that erosion and sedimentation should not be an issue with normal construction practices. However, the contractor should be held responsible for implementing erosion and sediment controls if conditions change. We recommend the following condition. Quotations, construction activity shall not cause erosion, two, or sedimentation to the abutting properties or town right-of-way. End of quotation. Six, the existing post and rail fence is located within the town right-of-way and should be removed. That was engineering. Conservation has no comment. Water has no comment. And that's what we have.
Any letters in support?
No letters.
One previous decision.
And one previous SP, yes.
For the applicant, good evening.
Thank you, Mr. Chair, and members of the board. For the record, Kevin Clower, I am an attorney here in town, and I'm representing Vivian Perez and John Munson, the owners of 92 Priscilla Street. Mr. Munson is here with us this evening. We are seeking permission to alter the existing nonconforming dwelling with a small addition at the rear of the building. So 92 Priscilla is located at the northern end of Maravista Peninsula. It's a dense residential neighborhood. The lot is small, it's 4,800 square feet. It's in a residential C zoning district. It's not in a flood zone, and it is on the Little Pond Sewer District. Presently, there's a four-bedroom, single-family dwelling with a footprint of 966 square feet, which is just 20.1% lot coverage. It's nonconforming to front yard setback at 21.3 feet, where 25 is required, and it's nonconforming to lot coverage by structure at 20.1, where 20% is allowed by right and up to 25 by special permit. There is an existing special permit, 2851, that was issued in 1978, that allowed for the construction of a dwelling on an undersized lot. The proposal is a modest addition. It's an expansion of the first floor in order to create a dining area. It allows for alterations to the existing interior space, but there are no other changes to the footprint proposed. The ridge height of just about 19 feet 2 inches will remain unchanged. The proposal does not impact existing setbacks. There is a slight increase to lot coverage by structure, it's just over 100 square feet, but at 22.5% will remain within the allowable range. It certainly is in character with the neighborhood, with the average lot coverage by structure is 22.4%. And with the issuance of a special permit, would eliminate the nonconformity. There's no increase in the number of bedrooms. Due to the existing nonconformities, though, this does require a special permit under both 240-10.2A and 240-11.3A4. Under 10.2A, pre-existing nonconforming structures may be changed by a special permit, provided they're not substantially more detrimental than what exists. The board is asked to consider the standards of 240-12.1E, and whether or not the alteration creates any new dimensional nonconformities, impairs views and vistas, and reasonably conforms to the neighborhood. In this case, as noted, there's no new nonconformity created. The existing nonconforming setbacks are unaffected. There's no change to views and vistas, and it very much does conform to the neighborhood. Under 11.3A4, lot coverage by structure in a residential C zoning district may exceed 20% by special permit. The board is asked to consider the size and height of the structure in relation to the neighborhood, the effect of shadow, the impacts on views and vistas from public ways, and the effect of nitrogen on coastal abeyments. We did provide that lot comparison worksheet, and shows that this is clearly in line with the surrounding properties. There's no increase in ridge height, so there should be no impact on views and vistas or shadow. And the project as proposed represents a benefit for the owners. It adds usual habitable space and is by no means substantially more detrimental than what exists. There's no new dimensional nonconformities, no change to the existing nonconforming setback, and the lot coverage by structure, though increased, is no longer considered nonconforming with the issuance of a special permit. I believe this meets all the requirements of 240-10.2A and 240-12.1E, and I would ask the board grant a special permit. I'd be happy to address any questions that you might have at this time.
More questions? Start with you, Tony.
I have no questions.
Scott?
Just to confirm, Attorney Clower, four bedrooms?
Yep.
And obviously, you're aware of the fence being located in town. Okay, thank you.
I liked the rendering. Thank you. Yeah.
Worked very hard on it.
Appreciate it. No, it was great. We don't get ones like that, and it was, made it a lot easier. I'm all set other than that.
Attorney Clower, what's the plan? Are you going to obtain a license, or is the fence going to be removed?
I would, I'm not quite sure what the plan is at this point. I would ask that the condition simply be that it either be licensed or removed.
Okay. Only question I had is, looking at the renderings, lot coverage is going to 22.5, correct?
Yep.
I saw on one of the pictures, it said patio, conceptual. What's that going to do? Is that going to be pervious or impervious?
So even with that, even with that, right now, we're at 31.8% lot coverage by structures, paving, and parking. With the patio, it'd still be at 37.3%.
Okay, just as long as we're not going to go over.
It would still, it would remain under 40%.
Otherwise, I think it's a lovely project. Thank you. Mark?
I echo everyone else's. It's nice, it's certainly modest. I think you captured it perfectly with that. And it's certainly going to change place for the better. A little brighter in the backyard, it's wonderful. And their dog was fantastic as well.
I didn't get to meet him. I'm sure he's a good boy, though.
It was a girl.
Frank?
I'm all set, thank you.
No comment. Public comment? Seeing none. How would the board like to proceed?
Motion closed with discussion?
Motion closed. Good discussion, okay.
But conditions?
No, not yet. Something to talk about. Oh, okay.
Is there a second?
Second.
Give it to Mr. Duffy. All right, findings?
Findings, let's see.
Quick discussion. No, no, I thought it was just a good project, so. Let's move on.
Anyone have concerns?
Nope.
All right. Findings?
It's in an RC zoning district, Great Pond overlay, not in a flood zone. There was one previous special permit. The lot size is 4,800. It's on a public road. Existing is 20.1 over 31.8, and proposed is 22.5 over 37.3. You know how I struggle here, Kevin? I think the height is 19.2?
It's 19, it's 19, 1 and 29 over 32, so I call it 19.
Well, it wasn't that bad. It wasn't that bad.
Ridge height will not be increased.
I called it 19.2, it was a little bit easier.
It's in a partial search and rescue, Little Pond Sewer. There is a comp sheet in here. 240-10.2A, 240-11.3A4. I think that's all. That's all I have. You got anything else?
Questions concerning the patio. Testimony was that it will not go over 40%. Total lot coverage, paving and parking, not more detrimental, not triggering any of the concerns in the bylaw. Drywells are proposed. Applicant acknowledged an encroachment of a split rail fence indicates they will either get a license or it will be conditioned to be removed. No new nonconformities, and a special permit will bring the house in compliance with the zoning bylaw. Conditions? Any other findings? Conditions?
Fence, either remove or license.
Hours, cooperation?
All town referrals.
Should we put the patio to not go over 40 in conditions?
Yeah, we can, yeah, we can. Not to go over 40%, sure. Work with the PD. If traffic is going to be an issue, Maravista can be tight. Anything else?
Additional structures have to come in?
Yes, absolutely. Additional structures, there are lot coverage excess, we'd have to come back. Any additional conditions, this said? All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? That is a vote.
Very much appreciate your time.
Next up, we have 01524 Remain 45 Toby Lane, East Falmouth, requesting a special permit to construct a loft addition porch and dormers and to allow a detached garage with habitable space above, and a plunge pool to be located in the front yard more than 50 feet from the property line.
I have Mark and Courtney Romaine, 155 Hawthorne Road, Braintree, Mass. Apply to the Zoning Board of Appeals for a special permit pursuant to Sections 240-10.2A and 240-11-4A1I, Dakota Falmouth, to construct a loft addition porch and dormers, and to allow a detached garage with habitable space above and a plunge pool to be located in the front yard more than 50 feet from the property line. The subject property is 45 Toby Lane in East Falmouth. And let's see what we have from town boards. Fire department has no comment. Assessors request inspection prior to sign-off. Planning board, there appears to be no cooking facilities. However, if they are installed, the applicant will need to apply to the planning board for a special permit for an accessory apartment. Building department, no comment. And here we have engineering. Number one, this application was reviewed for impacts to public rights away and public utilities. Toby Lane is a private right-of-way in this area. Two, any connections or alterations to public utilities will require permission from the appropriate town department. Three, the project must not direct any stormwater runoff to public property, abutters of public rights away. Four, drywells are proposed for the roof, as we typically recommend. Five, we recommend the following condition be included. Quotations, upon completion of the construction, the applicant shall post the address for this residence. Unquote, the number should be visible from Toby Lane, the front of the proposed garage or at the driveway entrance is recommended. Six, where this project falls under the jurisdiction of the Conservation Commission, we defer to the Conservation Commission for stormwater management and construction erosion controls. Conservation's does not, has not finished yet. Nothing from them. Water has, I don't see anything from, oh, that's concom. Water has no comments. Board of Health has approved a new septic system designed for a five-bedroom. And that's what we have.
Good evening.
Good evening again. For the record, Kevin Clower, I am for you representing Mark and Courtney Romaine, the owners of 45 Toby Lane. Mrs. Romaine is here this evening, as well as Mike Borselli, who is the engineer on this particular plan. They're seeking permission to alter the existing nonconforming structure and also to construct a detached two-car garage with some habitable space and a plunge pool, both of which would be located in the front yard of this property. The board has recently seen a number of similar proposals, garages of this nature, but worth going through it all. So 45 Toby Lane is located at the northern end of Central Avenue, bordering Eel Pond. The lot is 20,100 square feet. It's in a residential B zoning district. Portions of the property are very much within the flood zone, including the existing dwelling. Presently, there is a three-bedroom, single-family dwelling with a total footprint of 2,180 square feet, which is lot coverage by structure of 10.8%. It's currently nonconforming to the setback to the three-foot contours of the waters of Vineyard Sound. It's at 3 and 1/2 feet, where 50 is otherwise required. It otherwise conforms to setback and lot coverage requirements. The applicant is requesting permission to alter the existing nonconforming structure by the means of a small addition, which would provide new loft space within the dwelling, and as well as a porch on the western side of the home. In addition, they're seeking an accessory structure in the front yard, which is the plunge pool and the detached two-car garage. The garage will include habitable space on the second floor. This is not intended to be used as an accessory dwelling, it's simply additional space which overflow for the family. The proposal requires a special permit from this board under various provisions. The alterations to the existing home requires a special permit under 240-10.2A. The proposed garage and the plunge pool located in the front yard require a special permit under Section 240-11.4A1I. For the proposed alterations to the home, which is the covered porch and the loft space within, Section 240-10.2A states that pre-existing nonconforming structures may be changed by special permit, provided that it is not substantially more detrimental than what exists. Again, you're asked to consider the standards of 240-12.1E, and whether or not the alteration creates any new dimensional nonconformities, impairs views and vistas, and reasonably conforms to the neighborhood. In this case, there's no new nonconformities created, the existing nonconforming setback is unaffected, and this change has no effect on the views and vistas, and does remain in line with the neighborhood. For the proposed garage and the pool, we're applying pursuant to 240-11.4A1I, which allows for accessory structures to be located in the front yard, provided they're at least 50 feet from the street. There's no specific standard set forth for the board's consideration in that section, so we look to the, we look at the standards of 240-12.1E, which govern all special permit decisions. The threshold question under that section is, does the proposed use have adverse effects that overbalance the beneficial effects to the neighborhood and to the town? This proposal results in lot coverage by structure of 17.7%, which is still conforming and below the 20% allowed by right. Lot coverage by structures and structure paving and parking likewise remains conforming at 20.8%, well below the 40% allowed by right. The ridge height of the proposed garage is 22 feet, which is what is allowed. The finished space will include an additional bedroom, and we are proposing a new denitrification septic system, which is designed for five bedrooms and has already been allowed by the Board of Health. As I mentioned, this is not intended as a separate accessory dwelling, will lack cooking facilities, and would welcome a condition that would prohibit the addition of any cooking facilities or the use of the structure as an ADU until such time or unless the applicant's sought permission to do so from the town. We are aware of the correspondence submitted by Attorney Kirk on behalf of the abutter at 51 Toby Lane to the north. We received a copy of that letter earlier this week. I do want to specifically tackle a few items that are brought up. There's an allegation that the site plan is incomplete and incorrect as the label of a garage in the abutting parcel. That was previously the location of a garage on that site prior to that property being torn down and rebuilt. That site was not surveyed by our team, we have no authority to do so, and it's not a requirement of this board to provide surveys of abutting properties. It's also offered that the location of the existing structure at 45 Toby Lane is intended to provide neighbors with a view. That's simply not true, and it's conjecture. But the home has existed since the early 1970s. The abutting parcel to the north was previously part of the site and was subdivided off. That home to the north didn't exist until 2019, and it's alleged that there will be adverse impacts on the project. However, these stated concerns relate solely to private views at 51 Toby Lane. The letter does appear to try to shoehorn in concerns of another property owner, but he's not represented by Attorney Kirk, and as is noted in the correspondence, there is no view easement. Our bylaw does not protect private view rights, a position that has consistently been held by this board. It is important, however, to note that the barn has been designed to minimize impacts on the view. It's been moved as close to the street as possible. Any alternatives would have a far greater impact. A garage closer to the home, while more convenient for the applicants, would completely block the view of the abutter, as would attaching the garage to the existing dwelling. We did consider alternatives, including raising and reconstructing the house, but that would likewise result in a much worse view for the abutter because we'd have to come into compliance with flood zone standards. There's an argument that the garage with habitable space is not accessory. I would hold it's the definition of accessory. It's not an accessory use, but the structure itself is accessory to the main dwelling. The board has reviewed and approved many detached garages with habitable space. Most recently, 237 Acapescot, which was a detached three-car garage with bedrooms and recreation space above, as well as 384 Acapescot, also a detached three-car garage with bedrooms and recreation space above. And both of those applications were approved by this board within the last few weeks. As noted, the threshold question under this provision is, does the proposed use have adverse effects which overbalance the beneficial effects to the neighborhood and to the town? I want to focus on that, the neighborhood and the town, not to a specific property and owner. Let's consider the application. The lot is more than adequate in size, doesn't, the proposal does not change the nature of the use. It remains a single-family dwelling, but it does increase the owner's utilization and provides garage space and overflow space for them and their guests. There's no impact on traffic flow or safety. It remains in line with the neighborhood character and doesn't affect public services. It does include a number of benefits. There's removal of existing lawn, including a significant number of mitigation plantings, removal of an outdated septic system, which is to be replaced with a new denitrification system, which will significantly reduce nitrogen from this site. There's no new nonconformity created. The only existing nonconformity is effective. Lot coverage by structure and lot coverage by structures, paving, and parking will both remain well under the allowable thresholds, nor remain conforming. I believe that this meets all the requirements set forth in 240-10.2A, 11.4A1, and 12.1E. I'd be happy to address any questions that the board may have, but I believe that you can and should grant the special permit.
Questions from the board. Jerry, start with you.
No questions at this time.
Well, this is kind of a strange situation, where you really have to have the garage in the front yard because you have no backyard. But when I went out and I took a look at the property, one thing that certainly struck me was the proximity of this proposed garage to the house next door. And I'm wondering, is there any thought given to perhaps swapping the location of the garage and the plunge pool? You've got some room over there in the southwestern corner of the lot. Might be a little bit better location for neighborly commodity, comedy, rather, to move it there. I'm just wondering what thought has been given to that.
I think the issue with that, Mr. Duffy, with this line here is one of the setbacks for conservation, so that would be moving the garage almost fully within the conservation setback areas, which would have other downstream effects.
So your conservation setback area on the plan is the dotted red line, is that what?
We have, there's a few.
Or is it the dotted blue line?
So blue is the flood zone. The, this red line is the 50-foot no disturbance zone that I'm tracing right here. So by moving it to the southwest, it actually is going to locate it more within the 50-foot no-touch zone, which has complications with the conservation.
So basically, what you're saying is it, you can't move it, then? It's got to be in that?
I don't think we can move it.
Well, you don't have much space there, it's because of the...
Because you couldn't come closer to the street.
Yeah. Now, as it is right now, is that 50 feet exactly from the street?
51.
51, okay. All right, thank you.
Mark?
I have a couple of concerns, and Frank's was mine also, but from the information you 've given him, you haven't even tried. And secondly, it certainly demonstrated by Mr. Kirk's vote. And secondly, it certainly, and demonstrated by Mr. Kirk's photo, it does inhibit public views and vistas out towards Washburn Island and the ocean. My question is, first, do you agree? And secondly, it's a private road. Does that negate a public view?
Well, that public view is only from the porch of 51 Toby Lane, so I'm not sure how much of a public view that is.
No, but a public view would be from the street, would it not?
Well...
That's been the way they've defined it in the past.
The photo, though, is from the porch of 51 Toby Lane.
But that doesn't change the fact that if you're on Toby Lane, the structure absolutely obstructs the view to Washburn Island. And I'm thinking along the lines of what Frank was, and especially if no effort was made to try to shoehorn this thing in, even if it had to be a slightly smaller structure. I question whether the due diligence was done to preserve the public view and vista. And then, on top of that, if you look at the plan, I certainly question the... Excuse me, one second. Well, I don't need to look at it. The second set of stairs in the garage, say you have one left and right, and that certainly appears to me that it's there so you can just close the six-foot setting off and have the office separate from a potential living facility. And with the sink there, it certainly seems that, you know, further down the road. But at first, I'd like you to address my views and vistas question, because without a doubt, Mr. Kirk certainly seems to have a point. And I think, in an effort to maintain neighborhood harmony, I think moving the thing and potentially making it smaller might have at least been explored.
So I will actually, I think you answered the question, Mr. Fineran, which is that Toby Lane is not a public way. There's three properties that can be accessed further down Toby Lane, so there's really no view of the public that's being impaired here. It's a private way. So I don't think that that really comes into play in this case. I do think that we addressed that question, because if you were to shift this further south, you are coming within the 50-foot no-touch area, the 50-foot resource area from Concom. So I'm not sure that that would be permissible. I can discuss with the applicant, of course, but I don't think it would work for that reason. We wouldn't be able to slide any closer to the street, even if we brought it further south, because that is effectively the 50-foot plane here.
I understand that, but it seems that the potential of fitting a smaller structure is there. And you actually gave me your opinion that a private way doesn't constitute a public view, but it's... The public traverses that road on a daily basis. So that one's... I don't think we need an opinion other than yours. And then, again, I mean, it seems quite obvious with the two sets of stairs. I've certainly never seen one of these with two sets of stairs. It certainly seems to indicate that there are future plans. Not that they may necessarily be out of line, but it looks like somebody put the car before the horn.
Well, I can address that question, Mr. Fineran. There is required two means of egress. So typically, you see stairs on the outside of one of these structures. We didn't put it on the outside. We kept both stairs inside, but per building code, there needs to be two forms of egress from the upstairs. That was the text I just received from the architect.
It's a new one on me. It's definitely a first.
Yeah, I mean, generally, you see these stairs on the outside. You see a lot of the egress, the secondary form of egress on the outside.
And what's the lot coverage on this total?
Seventeen...
So the lack of an outside staircase wasn't due to lot coverage. It was...
I think it's aesthetics. I think you'd have a staircase facing the street or facing the neighbor.
Or facing the ocean view with a nice little porch.
Now, there's not much space between the house and the barn to put it, so...
But in the back, which is where the view is, that's being blocked by the public. That's all I have for now, but I might come back.
Suzanne?
Kevin, did the applicant meet with the neighbors?
Yes. The applicant did.
And the one right behind, not the one that Mr. Kirk's representing, but the one behind?
Mr. Anderson across the way.
They totally blacked out.
I don't know if they met with them or not, but they haven't expressed any concern over this.
Okay. And when is your conservation meeting?
They've already opened a hearing. They asked for some minor changes to the plans, which are being submitted, and the final hearing is this week, next Wednesday.
And we had another case, if I'm correct, I could be wrong, on Pheasant, where there was a plunge pool 26 feet from the water.
I don't...
And I don't know why you can't move that.
I don't know what that case was.
Yeah. Okay, that's all I have.
I have no further questions. I think the board has brought up all of the concerns that I had.
Tony?
Mr. Clower, what's your definition of a neighborhood as it relates to this?
Typically speaking, when we do, when we look at effects on neighborhood, we look within 300 feet of the property.
And what is substantially more detrimental mean to you?
Well, the effects have to be such that it would be out of line with the remainder of the neighborhood, and I think being at 17% lot coverage is not out of line with the neighborhood. I think that if the applicant were to tear down and rebuild this house, they could build a bigger house in a way that would block this in a more meaningful way. They're still providing a number of views here on the property. And, you know, the alternative to this is really a raise and rebuild, which is going to have to comply with flood zone standards, probably be located more in the center of the lot, and I think would have much worse effects.
Under 12.1E, what is your definition of impaired views or vistas?
So we've never, that's never been perceived to protect private view rights. The board has consistently taken the position that a view easement protects private view rights or grants private view rights, but there's no such thing as a right to a view from your property. And the applicants aren't blocking the view entirely. In fact, they're leaving a pretty substantial view corridor. And I think that protecting views and vistas is from public ways, and this is not a public way.
I don't, I'm not disagreeing with anything, because I'm not 100% sure, but whether this is a public or a private way, it doesn't address that in the bylaw. It doesn't define that as a use. But when you look at, and I spent a lot of time up there because I'm very concerned about this, when you look from 50 across the street, certainly 51 north of the property and 40 across, this garage impairs views or vistas with or without easement. It just impairs views or vistas. So I agree with, I think it was Mr. Fineran, earlier, and that's what this bylaw says. That's one of the standards. You cannot do that. It cannot be more detrimentally detrimental to the neighborhood. This is a neighborhood, whether it's public or private. The neighborhood doesn't say public-private road. So my concern is that with or without a view easement by this bylaw, it's impairing the view and vista of somebody else, not defined. I saw it as number 50, certainly 51, and number 40 by putting that garage right there.
So views and vistas is one of the considerations the board's asked to look at. It's not the only consideration. And I think that, to my point earlier, an alternative to this project is a relocation of the entire house that's going to have a much greater impact on the neighborhood and under your definition. And I think that this is not out of line with other things that have been approved constantly. And I think that, you know, the views and vistas question is intended to protect public views, not private view rights. And again, this is a private way, so I don't think it's analogous. I don't think it's what the bylaw is trying to protect, because the board has never perceived private viewer concerns as one of their considerations.
No more questions. Thank you.
Any follow-up questions?
In your response to our questions about moving the garage, you continue to refer back to knocking down and rebuilding the house without really addressing, other than you said you never tried, making an effort to, as Frank suggested, switch these things around, even if it may end up with a smaller structure. I would have thought that it would have been considered. And I'm, as I'm a member of the public, and I'm free to drive up and down that road, and I know a lot of people do, because it's a nice view there. And again, I go back to Mr. Kirk's picture, was taken from the neighborhood property. It's not that difficult to see that if somebody was, you know, standing on Toby Lane, the view is definitely obstructed. And I kind of struggled with that.
Anything else you want?
Hey, one more thing. My comments don't apply to the house. I'm only, my comments are only to the garage. I just want to make sure that's said.
All right, public comment. How much time do you need, Mr. Kirk?
Good evening, Mr. Chairman Edward Kirk for Kate Dalton, who's the immediate abutter. I have just a couple of introductory remarks, and then, with the board's permission, I'd like to ask my client to come up. She's brought some photographs with her.
Check them for the board.
And she'd like to have them for your consideration. Just want to make a couple of points about public ways and public views. The only place where the phrase "impact on views and vistas from public ways" appears in 240-11-3, that's the lot coverage section. So if the board is going to be considering granting a permit that, where the lot coverage exceeds that required, the board can take into consideration the impact on views and vistas from public ways. The term "public ways" does not appear anywhere in the special permit language relating to the impairment of views and vistas, and it doesn't appear in the language relating to Section 6 findings, which is to say substantially not more detrimental. There's no qualification or limitation that the view being impaired be from a quote "public way." With respect to, and I made a note of this in my letter, we're not claiming a private view easement. If we had a private view easement, it wouldn't be before the board for enforcement. You don't enforce private property rights. You enforce your bylaw. It would be up to us to enforce a private view easement with appropriate legal action in court, so you don't have to worry about the enforcement of private views. And I agree, your bylaw does not create private views, but it does give you the discretion to consider impact on views and vistas in the neighborhood, and I suggest from abutting and neighborhood properties. That's the purpose of that provision, to give you that discretion. My client's residence is fairly new. The residence that's owned by the folks at 45, the Romaines, that building has been there since the 1930s. It's shown on an early subdivision plan. I can provide you with a copy. And it's tucked into the corner. If you look at the old plans, it's tucked into the corner purposely. The folks behind then sort of stands to one side. They've got a great view. They've got immediate access to the water, which the others don't, but they do have, it does provide a view corridor down there. So that's just something to consider, and whoever comes along behind it would like to maintain the view that has been there. As I said, my client is Kate Dalton, and her house is just to the north of the property line. This building would be 12 feet from the property line. Excuse me, it would be 22 feet high and 30 feet wide. And with your permission, I'd like to ask my client to come up and show you some pictures so you'll understand the neighborhood from a broader perspective and not just a bird's eye view of the applicant's property.
Hi, good evening. My name is Catherine Dalton. I'm the immediate abutting neighbor next to the Romaines. I have some pictures that will answer a lot of your questions and concerns that you had brought up. You can see exactly where my property is relative to their proposed structure. I think the best way to look at this, I don't know if I can make that any bigger. This is my house right here. This is the Romaine's house, so you can see how it's sort of at an angle. So if they went up, that would not impede the water view whatsoever like they're bringing up, because it's kind of kitty corner out there. The structure they're proposing goes right where that arrow is.
You can make that larger on the bottom right-hand corner.
Can you shut the lights off that are above the screens?
All the way over to the arrows.
To see the screens.
Oh, this, okay.
All the way over. Yeah, there you go.
There we go. Thank you. You'd think that I would be... So this is my property here. This is my front porch.
Blacked out at home. Television.
Right above the screens.
All right, that's better.
There, there we go.
I can't see it.
Not bad, Jerry.
Yeah, see better.
Someone else can.
So this is my property right here. This is my front porch. This is my living room, my dining room, family room, which has direct views of Washburn Island, Antecad Sound, and Martha's Vineyard. Their proposed structure is going right where this car is, almost directly in front of my home. It's within 12 feet. I do also have pictures of the lane. So this is Toby Lane from the Toby Lane view, so the public does come up and down this road all the time, like you say. This is a beautiful road that people like to drive by and admire, the view of Eel River as well as Washburn Island. This is the public, this is where the public would be driving up and down, and this is the view that they would see from the road. This is my driveway here. This is the Andersons, which is my other neighbor who is also present tonight. This, where you can see the orange, is where that structure would go. This is the view from my living room. All three windows look out across the Romaine's yard. This would completely be, I would just be looking at a building directly in front of me. You can see the stake, there's one of the stakes is right here, so this is part of the building, which goes all the way back there. This is also from my front porch. This is where, this is what the building would be completely obstructing. This is another aerial view. So the Romaine's house is tucked away over here, so they're not even directly in front. Whatever they would do to go even higher would not impact any views of the neighborhood whatsoever. But this right here is exactly where that structure would be. The other thing that I wanted to point out is if you look at the aerial view of all the neighbors, we are spaced out amongst each other. Nobody has a garage in their front yard. Nobody has a structure this close to their abutting neighbors. So this would also make our neighborhood look somewhat cramped in the amount of work that they're trying to do. And the amount of work that they're trying to do in their yard just isn't consistent with the look of the rest of the neighborhood. I also wanted to point out the history of their land. In 1924, that the house was built, the cottage was built, and it's the exact location that the Romaine's house is on now. It was a boys' camp for many years. And the boys would play and have summer activities on this land. So this is actually a very sort of historic part of our neighborhood. Every neighbor that moves into our neighborhood is given a history of Toby Lane. So it's a very, very special and magical place to all of us. And not just myself, but other neighbors. Like you said, there's three of us total who would be impacted by this structure, which will be placed right there.
Anything else? Other public comment?
Good evening. I'm John Anderson, the owner of 50 Toby Lane. Not an engineer, not a lawyer. Just want a few comments about this. I also bought my property from the Rice family about roughly eight years ago. When that happened, a guy named Don Apps was the president of the Toby Lane Association at the time. Don Apps took me in and kind of gave me a little history on Toby Lane, about being respectful to the texture of Toby Lane, respectful of the neighborhood and how it's been over the years, even though I am a newcomer as well. And really encouraged me to be less, you know, less impactful on the lane as possible. Really, my concerns when I look at the plans is the garage is right on the street like that. It's going to be on the street. It's definitely going to change the texture of the lane. And, you know, I would be opposed to the variance to allow it. Because it makes, it looks to me like there was going to be, instead of just having one house, now we're going to have two houses there. You know, and with, you know, adding the more bedrooms, there will be more traffic, you know, on a private lane, one-lane road. Thank you for your time.
Can I ask a question?
Sure.
Was your house existing prior to 51? Or did you buy after 51 was already built?
I actually bought, there was a raw piece of land. It was the forgotten land on the Toby Lane. I guess the kids used to play in the field, you know, 50 years ago. And when 51, I don't know the timing on that, but I think he might have started before me. Or I started before him and he caught me. Roughly about the same time. I would say within six months of each other, we broke ground.
I'm just looking at the angle of your driveway in your front of the house. It almost looks like you're looking directly into the front of their house. So from a views and vistas perspective, did 51 impair yours?
I have a picture of...
No.
You need to be recognized and come to the podium, ma'am.
Yeah, no, it doesn't affect me.
Okay. I just was wondering at the angle here.
I've never built a house before, so I placed it myself. And I'm pretty happy. We actually had it a little bit close to the street at one point. But then, you know, we have some land there, so I pushed it farther away just to give everyone some elbow room.
Very good. Thank you.
Mr. Chairman, may I ask questions? When you built your house, number 50, I mean, what I think I'm hearing you say is that this garage, even though I saw it as the vista being impaired from your property, I just backed up into your property a little bit, looked out. You don't feel that this garage has any impact on your property?
I think I won't see the water anymore, yes.
You think it will have an impact?
I do, yes.
When you built your house, when did you build it?
I think I finished in 1819.
Did you build it with the expectation that you might still have a view after you built it? I mean, was it important to you? Did you consider that as part of? And be careful how you answer this.
Yes, I will be careful. I definitely took note of that, and that was kind of an added bonus. But as we all know here, the best way to control a piece of land is you have to own it. And I do not own that property. So I feel a little awkward coming up here, making some comments on someone else's land. But I feel, you know, in the neighborly thing on Toby Lane, I think the garage is going to change it.
Well, the neighborly thing would be not to have a vista, a view blocked.
That is correct.
Okay, thank you very much.
Other public comment?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. I just wanted to sort of pick up the trail a little bit. The burden of proof here is on the applicant to show that he's met the criteria for a special permit to be able to put an accessory structure in a front yard. And this is sort of an unusual accessory structure. It's, the applicant refers to habitable space. Well, it's a fairly sophisticated extension, really, of the primary use of that property. A bedroom, an office, a family room, a wet bar, a bathroom. It's really an extension of the house. If they wanted to put that extension, that kind of, an addition, if you will, or add those facilities to the main house, they'd have to go before the Board and establish that it was not substantially more detrimental to the neighborhood. Not just a, you know, the special, the general special permit. And it's anomalous to me that by calling this an accessory structure, they can basically extend the primary use on the property by some 735 square feet in a brand-new building. So the question then is, in view of the particular characteristics of the site, and you've heard testimony from my client and Mr. Anderson, and you've seen what the site looks like and what the impact of this structure would have. There's no question it will impair views and vistas. And that is one of the main considerations, I think, when you're considering the characteristics of this particular site. My client's view goes directly across out to Washburn's, Eel Pond, and Vineyard Sound, exactly where this structure is proposed to go. Is this use in this structure in harmony with the general purpose and intent of the bylaw? As a general rule, accessory structures are not allowed in the front yard. And in the description of accessory structures, garages and sheds, well, this is a lot more than a shed, and it's a lot more than a garage. It's a garage with basically an apartment, a lot less, a stove. Most people can get by very easily with a microwave and a toaster oven. And that's all that would be needed. This is very close to a dwelling unit. But it is also an extension of the primary use. The question, what beneficial effect does this have on the neighborhood or the town? They demonstrated that there's a beneficial effect to even consider. I haven't heard anything that would establish that this structure will have a beneficial effect for the neighborhood of the town. And then if it did, is it overbalanced or outweighed by the negative effects? I think there's no question that the negative effects of this structure outweigh any beneficial effects that have been demonstrated. So I don't believe the structure qualifies for treatment even as an accessory structure. If it was a smaller structure, one-story, only a garage, let's say yes, it is an accessory structure, accessory to the primary use. But it combines the primary use. At least one half of the area of the structure, the second floor, is an extension of the residential use, the primary use. So what we're asking is that you find that the applicant has not sustained his burden of showing that he's entitled to a special permit. There are no beneficial effects. The adverse effects outweigh, and in view of the particular characteristics of the site. So thank you very much for taking the time to hear our case.
Do you have a comment, sir?
We're on TV.
We're on TV.
So I'm deaf, and I got dengue and AIDS. I think they got wet today. So I've only heard trims and drabs of what's going on here tonight.
Could you state your name?
For volunteer board. You've done your homework. I like that.
Can you tell us who you are?
I'm sorry, I'm getting there. I'm John Fryer, 40-year resident down there. And I drove down here tonight because, you know, the way I look at it is that the control of our neighborhood, it's in the hands of the ZBA in today's decision and in the future. Because, you know, it's a private road. It's about 960 feet to their driveway from Central Ave. The total length of the road is 1,080 feet. And it's, it's shown on the plans as 15 feet wide. It's typically 10 to 12 feet, which is a problem for cars passing each other, safety for fire department and whatnot. So I want to make sure everybody understands that. As we consider this big expansion, the views are spectacular. It seems a little bit on the arrogant side to block people's view. I don't know the details of what you could do to get around that. And that's not anything to do with me personally. But, you know, it's quite a complex that they're adding to that area. And we have the Toby Lane Association that takes care of the road. And they have a picnic area that is adjacent to their property. And it's kind of a special little place. We have picnics up there and stuff. But I just want to make sure that you know how long that road is and how thin it is. And the size of this project, it's a big, it's a big deal to me, having been there for 40 years. I just want to thank you guys for, drove down, some couple of you guys drove down there, checked it out, and it's very admirable. And thank you.
Any other public comment? Board discussion?
I got to get the lights, but I'll come back.
I guess, you know, I'd like to see if there was a way with the applicant and the abutters, if they could have some additional discussions to some of the Board's questions about potentially trying to move the building, soften it a little bit, and see if there's a win-win between the applicant and the abutters. I mean, they could put up a row of trees on that line and block people's vistas. I, you know, I would hope that somehow cooler heads prevail and they could work this out. But that's just a thought.
How did the discussions go with the neighbors?
We're here. And they have legal opposition, so not great.
No, I mean, there was only one opposition?
There was, there was conversation with Ms. Dalton by the applicants. I wasn't involved in the conversation, so I don't...
No give and take or anything?
I don't, I wasn't part of the conversation, Ms. Murphy, so I don't want to make any representations.
I do wish to wait for conservation anyway. And I feel that will give him time to maybe move things around if he's still under conservation. I mean, the meetings aren't until next week, you said?
Yeah.
Yeah? That may help, anyway.
And a second consideration, especially in light of they're looking for more habitable space in an office, I mean, which are often referred to as an in-home office. There is room on the left side of the house where the porch is proposed now, where you could actually have these things as part of the house and eliminate this conflict altogether. I mean, you obviously can't end up with a 30-foot-wide garage, but that's certainly wider than the average two-car garage. And again, it just, with this situation with the neighborhood and the way it is, the fact that either of these options seem to have never been considered, along with the opinion that a public, a private road doesn't have a public view. I have to confess, I love driving around Falmouth and, you know, going down. And I've been down there numerous times, just because it's nice. And the view is beautiful. You can't, anybody that went out there can't argue with that. And I, I mean, and an accessory structure in the front yard is a special permit. And to my interpretation, it's not guaranteed. And I would have preferred a little more due diligence and harmony in the neighborhood.
If I can speak to that, Mr. Fineran. So actually, adding on to the existing house right now isn't possible in the way you mentioned, because we'd need to bring the entire structure into flood zone compliance.
That's my question.
A portion of the structure is in the flood velocity zone. It would need to come up at the front, it looks like, probably about 3 feet in order to, if you added more than 200 square feet of habitable area. So that's one of the definitions of substantial improvement under our bylaw. It's not the building code, it's the Falmouth zoning bylaw. It states that the addition of more than 200 square feet of area constitutes a substantial improvement. So they were trying to avoid...
Living area, correct?
Yes, so, but the porch would not count.
No, I understand that. But a garage isn't considered living area. And, you know, you could go up and then back into the house, although it would be limited in that fashion, but...
So the alternative, you know, one of the possibilities is that they could, you know, lift the entire structure, 3 feet or so, in the front. And the addition of a garage, as shown here, could be done without the benefit, or as attached, if attached, could be done without the benefit of a special permit, because one of the exemptions in our bylaw is on lots of more than 20,000 square feet, you can alter an existing non-conforming structure if what's being proposed meets the setback requirements. And so, you know, they could attach a garage if they lifted the house. But that's not, they were trying, you know, they're trying to avoid that because I don't think that's going to benefit anyone.
A garage doesn't count as habitable space, so I'm not sure that that's correct, that they'd have to lift the entire house to do that, because they can add on to the house as it exists now.
Because it's 3 feet.
So that said, you know, I spoke with the applicant, and we're happy to run some alternative designs and see if they can work. We're happy to look at switching location. I don't think it will work from a conservation standpoint, but we'll run that to the ground. And we'll see what changes we can make that can help to address some of the concerns that have been stated by the Board.
I think it would make the Board more comfortable.
Yeah, we're happy to do that.
You know, in the end, what happens, you know, happens. But for the, why not the neighborhood? I don't think it would be a bad endeavor.
So where, at that point, you know, at that point, we'd like to request a continuation so that we can have an opportunity to look at alternative designs.
Let me get the rest of the Board in, but we'll decide to continue this down the road. Frank?
I have some of the similar concerns that Mr. Fineran has. The, I would like to see alternative presentation here. I understand that this garage is going to have to be in the front yard. You don't have a backyard, so you really have no choice but to be in the front yard someplace. But nevertheless, I feel it's kind of a larger structure than maybe necessary. I would like to see if it can be moved. That may mean that you have to either switch with the plunge pool or perhaps even abandon the plunge pool. But I think that, given all of the considerations here, the folks next door, the neighborhood, the fact that this will be a significant structure right near the street, I would like to see you present, or at least look at and report back to us on alternative considerations.
Jerry?
The only thing I'd like to add is, this is...
The only thing I'd like to add is this is the first time I've heard that views and vistas from a private way. Does the board think we should check with town council as to the proper interpretation of-
The board's free to interpret it.
Well-
The board is free to interpret it.
Well, I mean, in the past, we have generally said from public ways. Attorney brought up a legitimate point. I'm not a voting member, so if no one else, there's going to be a continuance. I don't know if it hurt to-
I would like to make a comment, though, on this. When you're done.
Okay, I'm done.
I'm very concerned. I'm a no at this point, just so you're aware. I think that the impact in the neighborhood is, that this is more detrimental to the impact that, of the character of the neighborhood at this point. If you want to rework it, I'm open to that, but I just want you to know where I'm sitting at this point, Mr. Clower.
Appreciate that. I think that when, if the board grants a continuance on this, which I suspect will, we have to give Mr. Clower a little more direction as to what, as to what needs to be done because my concern is, is more about what's in our bylaw, obviously. And our bylaw talks about vistas and views. I'm not even going to get into the public or private road issue, but why not just put a line right through that part of the bylaw that discusses vistas and views? So in my opinion, my single opinion, no garage in that location, if you come back here, is ever going to work because it's going to still create a vista and view, block, block the vista and view of the neighbors. And I think that's a concern. I think you heard from the other people, of some of the neighbors, that's a concern. This house can still go up to max height and not, in other words, get more space for office and all that, without affecting anyone's view at this point in time. So I think that has to be looked at. I, I think you have to abandon the whole garage based on vistas and views without a view easement, but the bylaw says that. And I think the board has to consider that. So, thank you.
I also have a concern about what CONCOM is going to say, if this can even work in its current, so. Are you requesting a continuance?
Yes, please.
How much time would you like?
We're currently scheduling in May, right?
Refer to the zoning administrator.
What date are we looking at right now?
Earliest would be May two.
And if not, then it'll be the twenty-third?
Yeah.
Uh, let's go with the second and if we're, and if we're not ready, we'll let you know in advance.
Is there a motion to continue to May second?
So, move.
Yep.
The motion to mark the second is Suzanne. Any discussion on the motion? All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? We are continued. Under continuation, zero eight two two three Galasso, five forty-five Main Street, requesting a special permit to redevelop buildings for dwelling units, commercial accommodations and restaurant, appealing to building commission, uh, no, that's not part of the work we're doing with tonight. For the purpose of the record, the regular voting members are taking this matter under consideration.
I do have this to read.
Sure.
I do have a letter that was requested that I read from the building commissioner and zoning enforcement officer.
Wait a second.
Okay. Okay. Yeah. Check. To the next one. I'm back.
Hello again.
State leadership record.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. Members of the board, for the record, Kevin Clower, for the last time tonight. So, we're here for five forty-five Main Street, the former Royal Nursing Home. It is our understanding that town council has provided an opinion, and I know there was a letter from Gary today that we did receive. Respectfully, we would ask that the board vote to release town council's opinion to us because it's much easier for us to proceed when we know the position of town council and, and where the board is on those things. I had planned on asking for you to release it and then table it out until after the new hearings, but, but you ruined my plans. So, but we would still ask that the board vote to release that opinion if they're so willing to do so.
I think releasing it and then giving a continuance is completely contrary to the purpose of this board, getting an opinion of council. I'm against the idea. Discussion on it, the request?
I, I, this is unique in that we have two town experts disagreeing with an elected board. And I think releasing Mr. Tobin's memo is a benefit for the applicant as well as the public, or we could say those that are opposed to it, because he brought up some very interesting legal, very legal discussion. And, you know, I could just go to the conclusion and say, I'm all set, but it may be beneficial for the board to release it. And, you know, we're not going to go back, back and forth, he said this, we said that. We release it. I'm not a voting member in this, but I think this is one of the few cases we could release it. We're not setting a precedent and the conditions may support releasing it, where in other cases, it might not support releasing a legal opinion.
Frank?
This is a unique situation, as Jerry has said. It's not litigation. It's a matter before the zoning board of appeals where the applicant is applying for a special permit. I don't see how we can have a productive conversation with the applicant when we're talking about something and they don't know what we're talking about. In order to have a productive conversation, I think everybody in the room has to know the parameters that we are dealing with. Also, it's going to be very difficult going forward, talking about this project without somehow referring to the town council's opinion and the contents of it. And my understanding is that once we talk about the contents of the letter in open session, it becomes a public document and they're entitled to it anyways.
Mark?
I don't know if that's the case, but we were asked by town council to keep it confident. And I, as the last time we went through this, I respect his request.
I think that we can reference what the decision is without getting, without making it a public document, but I am opposed to releasing the opinion.
Absolutely opposed. That was his last sentence. Do not release this.
Scott?
I'm also opposed to releasing it. I wish we could have the discussion if, you know, Frank's assessment is accurate. This, it makes it more difficult for us to move forward, but quite honestly, it was drafted as attorney-client privileged. I think that when counsel, we've asked counsel in the past to draft documents, that if they're going to draft a document for us and it's going to continually be made public, I don't see how that they, we can get the information that we need. So I think that I would fall under their guidance, that it's attorney-client privilege.
Tony?
I have to agree with Scott. This is attorney-client privileged.
My, my two cents, just while you're on the subject, is I would have to agree with the majority of the board. We've had this ongoing issue with asking town council for an opinion. They have asked repeatedly not to have them released. There's rationale for that in that obviously if advice they give you now becomes the subject of an appeal, they've now given away perhaps their argument. So they have explicitly asked that when you ask for memo for them not to release it and if the board continues to release it, they will not be providing the memos to you anymore. So food for thought.
Would you like to proceed?
Well, we're still going to proceed, but if the board's not going to issue, release the opinion, then the board's not going to release the opinion. I will note, you know, in, in the twelve years or so that I've been here, I think this is the first time the board has not released an opinion of the town council. And only recently has it become under the purview of attorney-client privilege. And I'm not going, I'm not looking to argue that. That's not my rote-ho at this moment. But it's, it's an interesting development and I think it puts applicants at a disadvantage when we don't necessarily know what we're arguing against, so to speak. That said, we, we do want to proceed and, and to make it clear, Mr. Morse, we will, I, I don't expect that this is to be resolved tonight, based on the conversation we're about to have. So over the past few weeks, my office and the applicant have been engaged in significant talks with the town, specifically Gary Street, the building commissioner and town council. We've been doing so in an effort to find a way to revise the project such that it can be supportable by staff and approval, but approvable by this board, while also being feasible for the applicant in terms of financing, construction and management. We've considered and looked at a number of potential changes, but we believe we found a path that the building commissioner has endorsed and we hope that the board will support and approve eventually. We have not submitted that revision yet because we wanted to discuss it with the board tonight. We didn't want to submit it on Tuesday. And, and we wanted to come before you tonight, discuss what we're looking at. And our intention is to submit that revised application shortly after this meeting. So what we've discussed with the town is to alter the application such that it's under both the Mr. Cod zoning district, overlay district, and also under section two forty-five point one C two. It's a section of the bylaw we do not use very often.
The residual section?
Yep. And in, in a, in a way to allow this project as workforce housing. So section two forty-five point one C two allows the board to issue a special permit for a use that is not specifically allowed within a district, if the board finds that it resembles in its impact a use that is allowed by right or by special permit. Our application is currently situated, has reduced the total unit count here to sixty-seven, twenty-six of which are under the Mr. Cod overlay district, all of which will count towards the SHI. Seven of those twenty-six are to be restricted to eighty percent and the remainder will be between eighty and one hundred and twenty percent. The remaining units would be considered workforce housing, housing, both, both short and long term. Happy to condition restriction on, on the length of the leases, and on less than thirty days. But workforce housing is a use that is not specifically defined within our bylaw and it's, nor is it specifically allowed in any zoning district, but it, it's, in its application resembles long-term commercial accommodations. So we believe that this can be allowed pursuant to that section of the bylaw. And it, it can be done in a way that is not necessarily precedent-setting for the remainder of the Mr. Cod district and can provide this board with a path to approval if they choose to take it. A few things to note on, the parking lease has been secured, so we now have a total of eighty-three sites between on and off-site parking. This plan that, that I've just outlined was developed in, in connection with the town and specifically with the building commissioner, is one he could support. And I know he provided a letter, which we received a copy of this morning, with a definition of workforce housing. I think there's many reasons that the board should consider this. There's unique characteristics of this site that are not found elsewhere. The reality is that this building exists and it needs to be used in some way, shape or form. It will be used for something. This provides the town and this board with the same what that use is. I believe it's been previously mentioned, but it's been considered for uses that would have far greater impact on the town. It could be regulated by the town, including as a detox center. This existing site is one point five six acres. It's a nursing home that had a hundred and twenty-one beds and a staff of seventy-five, with visitors coming and going on a regular basis. It worked that way for fifty years. That time has passed and the building remains. It's got to be used in some way, shape or form, and this is a way that we can do it that specifically addresses a crisis that we have here and not just in town, but on Cape Cod. At the last hearing, there was some speculation as to the potential buildout of the Mr. Cod overlay district. This building doesn't exist anywhere else. The cost of doing this here is less. The cost is the burden that has prevented other developments from moving forward. I can tell you with certainty that the project that was approved across the street at the, at the, at the car repair shop did not move forward because of the cost of constructing. We have this existing building and it needs to be used. That speculation shouldn't stop what's really the first real bite at the apple. It shouldn't stand in a way of addressing this problem. This proposal doesn't disturb new land. The impacts will, will be less than those that were imposed by the use of this as a nursing home that existed for fifty years. And it addresses a pressing need for this town. We keep saying we're in crisis. You hear it every day, but we need to act like it. Board has a chance to approve this under that provision of the bylaw in a way that's unique. It doesn't establish a precedent. It's supported by staff and it works. It starts to address a real problem. It doesn't fix it. You have to start somewhere. What we'd like to do at this point is to discuss this with the board. If the board believes that they could support this, we'll submit the revised application tomorrow and we'll, we'll come back for the next hearing and hopefully that will be it and we can have this approved. That's what we're trying to do. We're trying to find a way that this board can support it, that staff can support it, which they've indicated to us that they do, and it allows us to move forward. That's all I've got.
Board have questions? Jerry?
So, I mean, you agree that we'd have to recommend, oh, you had just come in with a revised application-
We'll submit-
If you, if you think it's beneficial for your client.
If, if, I'm looking to have a discussion, Mr. Batanas. That's what I'm looking to do.
I think your recommendation is reasonable for us to look at. It's hard to say what we're going to come from conclusion, but is it either that or what you have in front of us now? Can it be both?
I mean, what we're proposing doesn't really alter, what, what I've suggested in terms of the application, doesn't really alter what we're proposing.
I just meant the section of the bylaw we're looking at.
So, I mean, it would still be under the Mr. Cod overlay district. We're still applying under that, but rather than applying for commercial accommodations, would be applying under two forty C five, don't make me say it again, C five-
Whatever.
Five one C two.
Right.
Thank you.
Frank?
Well, I would like to see this application affirmatively resolved and resolved soon. This is a project I think is, is very beneficial, so I'm open to discussion and I'd like to hear the details.
Mark?
First off, we don't know what you're proposing. And you're proposing something as more of a hybrid than is a good a way to describe it as any. The Mr. Cod bylaw that you say you're proposing under this is admittedly seriously flawed, but I, I just go, I have other problems with, but I go back to, well, you're asking us to speak about something we don't even know what we're talking about. You're not presenting us anything and it's not the, the, no, no criticism, but it's not the first time this has happened. And then I also have to just throw in, Ms. Murphy asked for clarification on the SHI and we got a letter that basically says, well, you can't tell you until it's permitted and done. And we're, we're given the rules and guidelines, but it appears that we're missing a whole page in the rules and guidelines, part one and part two and then sections one and two of part three. I'm not going to say it's obfuscation, but I don't have enough here to even consider anything here. And I, I don't see how anything but a continuation is not completely in order.
So I indicated previous hearings, I'm not concerned about the parking. I applaud you for getting additional off-site parking. I would have been fine even without it, as to that issue. I think applying a hybrid approach, you might get there. My biggest thing is I need to have the building commissioner say, okay, I'm okay with this before I can sign off on this type of approach. Yes, clearly, we need this type of housing. Clearly, we need more housing in general and I'd like to get behind this, but under the current Mr. Cod, I, I can't accept the, what is proposed based on the density. So the other question is, I, I, it's a very great argument about using the residual section of the zoning code, but I think we're going to have to repost the entire thing because it technically will be a new application.
I, I don't, I don't necessarily think that's, that's true. And we discussed this with, with Gary when we met, because it, it doesn't change what's being applied for.
Don't the neighbors have a right, though, to hear what section they're coming under and to-
I mean, the, 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 the application-
Believe me, I would prefer to be able to just proceed with an amendment, but I-
The, the application of what's being proposed remain, you know, the, the changes to the structure, what's being proposed remains the same. We're not, we're not changing what we're proposing, we're changing how we're proposing it.
Noreen, what's your, could you weigh in?
So my recommendation to the board would be that if there's an amended application, that as part of that amended application, certainly we provide enough-
I don't necessarily think that's true, and we discussed this with Gary when we met, because it doesn't change what's being applied for.
Don't the neighbors have a right, though, to hear what section they're coming under and to...
I mean, the application...
Believe me, I would prefer to be able to just proceed with an amendment, but...
The application of what's being proposed remain... You know, the changes to the structure, what's being proposed, remains the same. We're not changing what we're proposing. We're changing how we're proposing it.
Noreen, what's your... Could you weigh in?
So, my recommendation to the board would be that if there's an amended application, that as part of that amended application, certainly we provide enough time that there would be new notice sent out properly to the abutters and posted in the paper so that if you do vote under another section of the bylaw, that you have properly advertised that.
So, we don't... Excuse me, Mr. Chair. We don't have to start over. We just incorporate by reference?
Question, this process started with site plan review at the Planning Board. The Planning Board specifically wrote an opinion on the basis of the application that you initially brought in here. Do we have to go back to the Planning Board for more site plan review?
We'd need to modify the decision, but that happens often. When we have site plan review and then come to this board, and there ends up being some tweaks, we have to go back and modify. What we're proposing is less than what the...
But you shouldn't... I'm wondering, should you come back here until you've been to the Planning Board and got the modification of the site plan review?
I don't... The reality is, Mr. Duffy, that what we're proposing now is less than what the Planning Board proposed. So, I don't think we necessarily need to do that. If we were changing it...
But we don't know what you're talking about. You haven't told us yet.
Well, no, I... And if I didn't explain myself fully, that's on me. So, let me address that, because Mr. Fineran also said that you don't know what we're proposing. And what we're proposing remains sixty-seven units. It remains twenty-six Mr. Cod units, and the remaining forty-one would be this workforce housing. That's what we're proposing. It's the same plans that the board has had in front of them. So, really, what we're looking at is we have an existing non-conforming density of one hundred and twenty-one beds. We have this building that exists here and does not exist elsewhere, that this board can approve this under these provisions of the bylaw. So, that is what we're proposing. It's the same plans. We're just getting there a different way. And I understand, Mr. Morris, that you're saying you need buying it from the Building Department. I will bird dog Gary. And I... Based on our conversations, I expect that would... That he would say that, because he has said to me that he would support this.
Well, issues a letter. You've come a long way with me. Saying yes.
I think we do have a memo that...
I'm trying to read.
Let me read the letter.
I can read the letter. All right, Dear Zoning... This is from Gary Street, the Building Commissioner and Zoning Enforcement Officer. Dear Zoning Board of Appeals, following is the definition of workforce housing. According to Urban Land Institute, workforce housing is defined as housing affordable to households earning between sixty and one hundred and twenty percent of the area median income, based on HUD's published AMI. Workforce housing targets middle-income workers, which includes professions like police officers, firefighters, teachers, healthcare, retail clerks, and the like. Households who need workforce housing may not always qualify for housing subsidized by the low-income housing tax credit program or the Housing Choice Vouchers, formerly known as Section 8, which are two major programs in place for addressing affordable housing needs. Mass Housing further ensures workforce housing units are deemed restrictable as affordable. That's all he says. And I myself think that if you're changing it, it's absolutely a refile.
Well, I think Ms. Stockman presented a way we could do it without refiling.
Well, so you would extend, but the amendment would be essentially re-advertised. So, we would sort of...
But refiling implies withdrawing and then refiling, starting anew.
But I think your problem here is that Mr. Street has addressed the definition of affordability and maybe the target population as opposed to supporting the density that you're proposing.
I'm not suggesting that memorandum...
No, so I'm just commenting that he has discussed sort of a definition as opposed to...
The other thing I have is I went to the Mr. Cod meeting yesterday with the town planner. Mr. Arment was there. There was, I don't know, maybe ten, twelve people at it. The bylaw itself is in shambles. It needs work. And I'm sure Mr. Arment would even agree. Everyone was all over the place. The Planning Board even said it needs work. It needs to be tweaked. It needs a lot of work.
I don't disagree with that, but it's the bylaw that we have, and it's...
Today, but they're working on presenting one to town leader.
Sure, but our bylaw constantly changes. Our bylaw changes every town meeting, and we can only apply into the bylaw that we have. That's what we're doing. I don't think that this board can say that we're not going to grant any permits under Mr. Cod. I think that would be...
So, you're not willing to wait until they figure out the proper way to do it?
We have timing issues with this. I mean, there are... There's funding issues. There's timing issues with trying to get this approved. And I think that this is the bylaw that's on the books. Could it be better? Yes, but most of our bylaw could be better.
Okay, that's all I need. Do you?
I'm very happy that you've been having these discussions with council, with Planning Board, with the Building Commissioner. I agree, this has been an abandoned building for far too long. It seems to make a whole lot of sense, so I applaud everybody. Workforce housing's needed, and from that perspective, did you run a financial model with one hundred percent workforce housing?
I think that we end up with effectively a hundred percent workforce housing because the Mr. Cod is eighty percent for the restricted, and then the other units would be between eighty and one-twenty, and that's basically the definition that Gary provided us.
So, fundamentally, just so I got it right, you would have a hundred percent of the units that would be between sixty and one hundred and twenty percent of AMI. Is that accurate?
I'm going to let the person who actually needs to worry about the finances answer that question.
And again, I'm just trying to get the math of the units correct in my head, please.
So, good evening, everyone. Happy Easter. Michael Glasson, developer, 107 Lakeview Avenue. So, to answer your comment, Mr. Cod requires us to have twenty-five percent of Mr. Cod units affordable at eighty percent. What we have committed to do is that we would have all the Mr. Cod units affordable up to one hundred and twenty percent. So, twenty-five percent would be at eighty percent. The other seventy-five percent would range between eighty and one hundred and twenty. All Mr. Cod units would be restricted in perpetuity, affordable. I think that meets that definition. The other thing I'd like to say, and my business partner, Michael, is right there and was at the meeting we had. So, it was very nice that we had a chance to meet with the Assistant Town Attorney and with Gary, and sat in a meeting, and it was the town manager who suggested we change to that section... Town Council, I'm sorry. The Assistant Town Council suggested that we change to that provision in the bylaw. We didn't suggest it. We were there, discussed what we could and what we couldn't do, and it was Brian who suggested that we change. And then Brian asked Gary if he would agree to that change, and he said he would. So, you know, it's very hard for us to go to meetings with town officials where at one point they agree to one thing, and then afterwards they're writing letters that sort of muddy the waters a little bit. But, you know, I know. I know.
Sometimes less is more.
Yeah. So, I hope that answered your question, and if I have a chance to answer the question regarding the SHI. Yeah, it's unfortunate that we can't get a firm decision from the state until we submit all the documents that they're asking. So, that's why I provided you with that information, the name of the people at Mass Housing we talked to. And if you want more information on the guidelines, it's one hundred and ninety-two pages. They're available online. Just Google "Chapter 40(b) Guidelines." But I gave you the relevant section regarding what we have to do in order to get any of our units on the SHI.
Would you mind resubmitting your letter, Mr. Glasson, just to make sure there was some discussion, a couple of the pages got omitted? That could have just been a printing error or otherwise, but just to make sure that...
Absolutely.
Thank you.
Starts at number four, or halfway through number three.
So, we've tried very hard to answer all the questions we've had over the last... You know, I've been dealing with this now for over a year, over a year before we submit. I hear you. So, I hope that we've done a good job answering your concerns. We went out and got more parking spaces than what you requested. We now have eighty-one parking spaces between what we have onsite and offsite. You've heard Kevin mention what the property was used for. We're not adding one square foot to that building. Both your housing production plan and the housing element of the comprehensive plan talk about reusing buildings like this. That gives you the authority to make the changes that we're asking for. It's already been approved by town meeting for us to reuse existing buildings for affordable housing. So, I hope you will take that into consideration. I appreciate all the time you've taken on our project. I think everyone thinks it's a great project. We have a lot of supporters here. We have had. I think we now have more than thirty letters of support in the files. So, I just hope you don't confuse this with other affordable housing projects you might be working on. This is in the great location to reuse an existing facility. It's on-town sewer. It has all those positive things that I think make a good affordable housing project. I've been doing this for forty years. I think this is one of the better locations that I've worked on, and I've used buildings like this that exist still today, that are still providing good affordable housing. So, I hope you take all those considerations into mind when you're debating on to grant the project for this project. Thank you.
Just to follow up, Attorney Clowers, so term, again, what would these rental terms be?
So, what we've discussed in the past is a limitation of no less than thirty days. We're not... That's not written in stone. As far as we're concerned, we can change that if the board sees fit. We wanted to make sure that they're not short-term, but, you know, there does need to be some flexibility. Some of these will be J-1 students or people who are coming here to work for the summer. So, we wouldn't want it to be a condition of a six-month lease, because that wouldn't work for everyone. So, that's something we can discuss, but, you know, we certainly... This isn't going to be, you know, a weekly rental. This is meant for, you know, short to long term. It's thirty days, sixty days, ninety days.
So, do you know what a J-1 work visa is from a term perspective?
I don't. I don't.
Okay.
I mean, you know, but I also don't want to limit this to just J-1 students.
No, I'm with you. It's just more general knowledge.
You could have a college kid who's here lifeguarding for the summer. You could have any number of things where this would make sense, or someone working in restaurants, you know. But I think that it's not intended to be short-term rentals, but there does need to be flexibility in the length of the lease. Okay, thank you.
Thank you.
Yeah, I've kind of a lot of time on this. And this definition of workforce housing, the term and a lot of the other HUD definitions, all through these housing definitions, most of them require a minimum of a one-year lease to qualify. And I can't seem to find whether that is under the definition of workforce housing or not. Because if it in fact is, which still is unanswered, this would throw forty-one of those out the window. And then, secondly, if you're coming back, I think some financials are in order because if in fact it does qualify for workforce housing, just one of the subsidies appears to be a hundred thousand dollars. So, if in fact they all qualify, you're talking about six point seven million dollars in subsidies for a building that's on the market for two point six, is it, or two point nine?
I don't know.
Well, we don't know either. And, I mean, we had the number here thrown around seventeen million, and it's not affordable for the developer. And I just need to see some financials here because I don't think that it's... Again, and this is my belief that covers all of Main Street, that any kind of a parking waiver at all is warranted. There is just no... There is no parking, and when the structure goes up across the street, it's going to become even more readily evident to anyone that there's a lack of parking on Main Street because there's no guest parking. You allow for no guest parking. I just certainly need to see a lot more. And again, we have basically nothing in front of us this evening, so obviously the continuation and the amended application is necessary. Like I said, I mean, the use is... You're asking us to give you an extremely intensive use for monetary reasons of the developer, but you give us none of the financials to back it up. And again, I have a friend whose mother-in-law was in the building and other people. And, you know, one thing that has been communicated to me several times is even as it existed as a nursing home, there was an extreme parking issue and that anytime they went to visit anyone, they had to park in the Catholic Church, which I believe the Catholic Church has told you their parking is out of the question. And then also, due to the length of the abandonment, does I believe that parking has to be reconsidered or reconfigured as abutters and in a different zone are allowed a twenty-foot buffer, which isn't accounted for now. And no loading zone either.
So, if I can address some of this?
Which I'm sure will be on your next plan, but again, you're asking us to make a decision on something with totally not enough information.
So, to be clear, I'm not asking you to make a decision.
Oh, I understand, but I mean, there's just... These are things that we're going to have to have.
So, my wife actually worked at this building, and I would go have lunch with her occasionally. And, you know, I didn't experience that issue with the parking, but that's anecdotal, much as your story is. And it's also worth noting that we're not asking for a parking waiver. We have eighty-three parking spaces, which is more than is required because Mr. Cod only requires one space per unit, and then workforce housing doesn't have a requirement because it doesn't exist. So, clearly, something is needed, but I think one space per unit would be reasonable. So, we're not asking for a parking waiver. You know, you've referred to an extremely intensive use. This was one hundred and twenty beds. This was one hundred and twenty beds with seventy-five employees. I understand what you're saying about the abandonment, but uses are abandoned. Structures are not. And the structure exists. The parking exists. We're improving the parking. We're bringing the spots into current requirements that it didn't meet previously. We had to eliminate existing spots in order to do so, in order to allow returns by fire department and what have you, and we did all that. I don't know that the request of the financials is entirely appropriate because it's not a 40(b). We're not proposing it as a 40(b) at this point. And, you know, there are subsidies that are available for affordable housing, but I don't know that it's necessarily the purview of this board, nor should it be a basis for the decision of this board. So, I don't necessarily agree that the financials should be submitted. We're happy to talk about some of them, but I don't think we need to submit performance in this case. So, you know, to reiterate, we're not asking for approval. We're proposing an alternative way of getting to a good result that allows for this building to be repurposed in a way that it desperately needs to.
Jerry, you had a question.
Well, he touched on it, but he explained... I remember the 40(b) discussions of hands-off on financials for this board. I don't know to what extent we can ask for financials. Are we just interested in percent profit? What do we mean by financials?
Mr. Chairman. Look, I think that everybody wants to see this work. It's up to you to make it work before this board. I think it's very important to have Gary Street's backing on this, Town Council's backing on this. Your client knows their financial model, what's going to work and not going to work. You know what the board's concerns are. Just don't come back and just happen to turn it upside down or twist it around another way.
So...
But let me just say this. You know what works. Your client knows it's going to work financially. I don't even care. That's just me. I don't even care. I just want it to be successful. So, it's up to you folks to make it work.
Sure, and we're not asking you to make the financials work, but we can't move forward with a project that is going to die on the vine in two months because we can't get it off the ground. So, and that's, you know, as we looked at the different iterations, we looked at things that would end up resulting in that, and we don't want to get an approval to just end up not doing it because it doesn't make any sense.
That's what I'm saying.
So, that's what we're doing now is, you know, my intent tonight was to come in and to have this discussion that we're having, and I think it's a fruitful discussion. I think it is a productive discussion, and I think that we can get there. I can, you know, I'm happy to speak with Mr. Street further. I probably darkened his door too much. I probably darkened his door too much, but I'm happy to go back. I'm happy to speak with him. I'm happy to request a letter or that he come in person. Well, that's up to him. I understand that this board is reticent to move forward without that happening, understandably, because what we're proposing is something unique that does not happen very often. I have submitted one application ever under this residual provision in the bylaw. It is, I've seen it used just that one time. And we came to this because this is what the town has suggested to us as a viable path forward. We have this building. We have a way to make it into something productive that benefits the town, and we think it can be done this way, and this board can support it. So what I would like to do is to submit that revised application and then to move forward with this. It's the same plans. We're not changing the plans. We're changing how we get to the end result. The plans remain the same. So everything that's submitted to you, we're not changing that. What we're doing is changing the road we take to get to the end result in a way that this board can support. Because I understand concerns that were expressed about density and putting a square peg into a circle with the provisions we're applying under. I think that doing it this way allows the board to take the unique characteristics of this site into consideration in allowing us to proceed.
Could you, sorry, go ahead.
Go ahead.
I was just going to say during these discussions that you're going to continue to have with the building commissioner, could the town planner also engage with you to?
I'm happy to request.
Try and get the best outcome possible? Okay, thank you.
And I know town planner was CC'd on the memo that Gary sent today, so this is conjecture on my part. I don't think this is a surprise to Jed. I'm, I can't say I'm confident, well, I can't say with certainty, but I can say with some confidence that I don't think this would be a surprise to him.
Thank you.
Norine, the one thing I'm going to ask is, can you just please email town council regarding whether he wants, I'm not looking for a formal opinion, but I'm just looking for input about can we either renotice this or does it need to be reapplied? I don't want to get another month or two down the road of this.
No.
Where we make a decision and then find out we've committed an egregious procedural error and an appeal is taken.
So when we were looking at a date to continue to, we did add within that the opportunity to re-advertise so that we are properly covered. That being said, where we're talking about a new section of the bylaw, if you look at 5.1C, it talks about specifically prohibited uses, right? And it talks about uses not listed and what's prohibited. And I think perhaps contrary to what's been proposed, we don't have uses that are prohibited, meaning that they weren't listed or they were listed as not allowed. We have allowed uses. I think the issue, my perception, is that it is density, that we're talking about the number of units that are proposed here either for year-round or for workforce.
I'd be happy to speak to that.
If there's support for that, what I would recommend is potentially the applicant applying for a variance because they're looking for, as far as I can tell, an override of allowable density, right? So for example, Mr. Codd allows you twenty units per acre, correct?
Yeah.
So if you are looking to exceed what appears to be allowed, I think that the board could potentially consider that under a variance statute. And I guess in not committing to such a thing now, if we are going to re-advertise, it makes sense to give the board all potential options to consider.
If I can speak to that, Ms. Dockman. So what 5.1C-1 says is that uses not listed in 246.1 through 246.7, under any use category itemized for the applicable zoning district or prohibited. So if a use is not listed in the district, it's therefore considered prohibited. Section two of that says, however, a prohibited use, meaning a use that is not specifically listed in the allowed uses, may be allowed by special permit if the board determines that it closely resembles in its impacts a use allowed by right or by special permit in that zoning district. So what it's saying is if a use is not specifically allowed, then you can't do it. However, the next section says if it's not specifically allowed, you can do it if you get a special permit and if the board finds it closely resembles a use that would be allowed in that district either by right or by special permit. So what we're saying is that this workforce housing resembles long-term commercial accommodations. That's what we're trying to do. So I don't think it would be a variance because you can't grant a use variance. They're not granted anymore. So I think that this provision of the bylaw allows the board to find that this is allowed, that this can be allowable.
So you would be essentially taking what you were calling commercial accommodations and now essentially calling it workforce housing.
Mm-hmm.
Albeit that your use is the same, but you've given it a new label.
We're taking a different road to get to the same result.
Right. So again, what I'll say to you is the commercial accommodations is a use that is allowed, right? But you're looking to exceed the density that would be allowed. So what I'm suggesting with the variance is that you're looking to exceed what you can have, and that potentially the way to get there would be by variance. I'm not telling you how to apply, but I'm just putting it out there.
Mark.
Two things. First off, relative to the financials, if the applicant says that in the answer to our query that it's not financially feasible, I maintain that we need proof of that. And then, as far as this hybrid that you're proposing, you're saying that it similarly is similar to commercial accommodations because there is no real definition of workforce housing, but you're assuming that you can change it and require no parking, when in fact, commercial accommodations require one space per. And then this might be just a mistake on my part or a mistake on the building department's part, but they, first off, they'll be that all these rooms will require one parking space, which I think is minimal because a great deal of them are going to have two occupants. But also, I thought it was one and a half parking spaces for Mr. Codd, and I know it's an old saw that I play in, but parking's a huge issue all the up and down Main Street, and it's a large concern of mine. And I think it'll only be exacerbated with the building that's about to be built across the street.
Yeah. Developments must provide a minimum of one, oh no, that's non-residential uses. I'm just looking for, this is under Mr. Codd.
One space per Mr. Codd unit, even if it were a two or three-bedroom unit, that's what Mr. Codd bylaws says.
And as to the parking, I would reiterate that we, I'm just looking at the specific provision for commercial accommodation.
Well, you're maintaining that forty-one units require no parking.
No, I didn't say that. I did not say that. I said we're providing, I think one space per unit.
You said no parking is required under workforce housing. That was your.
I said it doesn't exist.
Well, the cars will. About anything, I mean, we're going to continue this.
Guest house, lodging house. So hotel or motel guest is one and one-tenth space per rentable room. Guest house, lodging house, other group accommodation is one space per rentable room. We have eighty-three parking spaces. That's how many parking spaces we have. I think that we have more than enough parking to accommodate the use that we're proposing. So we're not asking for a parking waiver. I want to make that very clear. There is no parking waiver being requested.
And what about the, what of the twenty-foot buffer after the abandoned use with the differing zones?
The parking lot remains. The parking lot has not been abandoned. The parking lot is still there.
The use has been abandoned over two years.
Sure, so we can't make it a nursing home.
Doesn't that give the budding zones a twenty-foot buffer?
So we can't make it a nursing home because that use is abandoned, but the parking lot remains. The parking lot is still there. We're not required to change that. The planning board didn't feel that we needed to change that in their site plan review process.
Planning board got Mr. Codd on.
How much time are you looking for, Mr. Clowers?
We'd like to be back as soon as we can. Realistically, I don't know what the notice period is exactly, but we can have a revised application to you tomorrow if need be, and, you know, as quickly as we can.
If I could speak to the timing real quickly. So the state has one round a year to submit for funding for affordable housing projects. One. Okay? They now combined all the programs that they have and make one application. That application for this year is due June 5th. I need to have a permit in order to submit that application. And we're talking about millions of dollars. This project needs about $8 million in subsidy. Okay? And what determines the financials is that each one of those programs that we apply for has a maximum amount per unit that we can get. So that's what really drives the project. If I add more cost, don't have income, I start to exceed the maximum amount that permissible. The town has $100,000 per unit maximum. Some programs have $80,000, but very rarely do they go over $100,000. So I have a timing issue in order to get in this year. If we can find a way to get this hopefully approved, and I have a permit in hand by June 5th, then I can make the application for this year. Otherwise, it's a whole nother year, and I'm not so sure that our seller, the current owner of the puppies, will sit and wait for us to do that. And there's someone here that can probably talk a little bit better about that than me, but that's our timing issue. So if there's a way that we can find to do that.
So we have an issue where if we're going to re-advertise based on an amended application, that has to be posted in the paper twice. So we cannot specifically condense the timeline to fit your timeline.
Oh, understood.
You know, there's just not a way for us to guarantee that.
No, understood.
And nor a vote, right?
So I would just ask that we have, understanding we have a renotice issue that needs to take place, I would just ask for the soonest date that we can in order to accommodate that.
And so at this point in time, it would be May 23rd for us to do that.
If that's the date we need, that's the date we need.
You know, and again, not speaking for the board, but I would recommend if you're going to modify your application, that you consider expanding.
If it has to be published twice, fourteen days before the hearing.
Is that the requirement?
So it has to be minimally the week and the two weeks before the hearing, minimally. And now, of course, we also have the issue of the publication date of the paper, et cetera. So we cannot work miracles. We obviously make best efforts to accommodate everyone's needs.
We know we can't do miracles, but we may need to all work together as hard as possible to make it possible for Mr. Clowson to have a decision by June 5th so that he can fund this project. If we submit a revised application tomorrow, what's the first date of publication that the notice could be in? I mean, what's really the quickest way to get that?
So you also understand there's an upcoming holiday, right? We have to, we have to have a new application. We have to submit that to, we have to write up a new legal ad, put it in the paper. So you're expecting us to get all this done tomorrow, which we may or may not be able to do. So we're making you the best offer we can so that we're looking at.
Understood.
Trying to get the new notices in the paper and continue the hearing to minimize your downtime.
The apartment has already been advertised.
Right.
The 25th is at Lawrence.
Yeah.
That puts you into May.
Does the second, second doesn't provide enough time?
Well, we also have.
Other hearings.
Half a million cases.
Yeah.
So the other part is, I mean, I don't think people want to meet till midnight.
No.
I don't think that's specifically going to justice.
I mean, my preference would obviously be to have it sooner, but if May 23rd is the date, May 23rd is the date, I don't, I don't know.
Motion to continue until that date.
Five twenty-three. Is there a second?
Seconds.
Any discussion on the motion? All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Five twenty-three.
Thank you. I know this has been a long haul on this project. I know we're not done yet. I know everyone would like to have it resolved, but I appreciate your time. I appreciate your willingness to think outside the box. And, you know, I know that we all want to see something good come from this, and I just want to say that we appreciate it. Your efforts.
Thank you, Mr. Clow.
Regarding minutes, we're tabling, I think, the 29th, 7th, and 14th.
So we are good to vote the 15th and 29th of February.
Tabling March 7th, March 14th. Everyone had opportunity to review the minutes of February 15th and February 29th and 2024. Any additions or corrections to those minutes?
No public comment tonight for all these folks who came, give a public comment.
Nope.
That we waited through for the meeting. No public comment, right?
We've just continued the hearing, so no. Moving on.
Motion to, did we make a motion?
Is there a motion to approve the minutes of February 15th and February 29th? All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Number two, would board discussion authorize the zoning administrator to administratively approve insubstantial change requests? Yeah, why don't we give a minute? Regarding insubstantial change requests. Anything you want to add, Norine? The board has discussed this before.
Yeah, I think this issue's come up several times. It appears that the board is fairly swamped with regular requests for insubstantial changes to the various approved projects. I think we've been talking about enough of them for a period of time that I have a pretty good feel for how the board would like to handle those. Perfectly happy to manage them as, you know, an administrative process through the department. And if there's an issue that comes up that is of concern, et cetera, I certainly can bring it before the board.
I don't disagree with all that, but if somehow in this process, say at this end of the meeting, you might inform of what has transpired because like there's, I'm not going to mention any specific projects, but I think it's something that we really need to keep an eye on because some of this stuff, you know, appears to be getting out of hand and not that there's anything we can do about it, but just giving us a summation of what you do on a weekly or as necessary.
We can certainly send you a copy of all of them.
Yeah, or even just to review on your part. I think both, maybe something that, because we've raised concerns about these before, and again, I won't mention any specific projects, but, I mean, if something, you know, tweaks you, tweak us with it too, just so we don't get behind, basically.
Mark, what are you asking me to do?
I'm asking just to be kept apprised of what.
Do you want a list of what she's done? Do you want to see the decisions?
My suggestion would be we add, under open meeting, just zoning administrator updates.
There you go. That's exactly what I'm asking for. Very proud of you.
Right out of the sky.
No, just trying to think. Would that make you happy?
Yeah, that's, you know, just like I said, because we have had conversations on some of these, and you certainly have a feel for what our concerns are, and then, of course, there may be others. of course, there may be others, or new things, and, you know, that's all, just, just a kind of update.
I will tell you in the past, you never had this kind of volume. This is a new thing.
No, oh, I understand. And, you know, and this is relatively new, because there, the volume has certainly increased, but I don't want to just be a stranger to all of it, that's all.
I also think it's important, Norine, I think the board probably would like to hear about other meetings you've been attending, other changes, and things that have been discussed by way of the town administrator, discussion with town council about certain things, or upcoming issues, just to, you know, just...
General update.
Keep everyone in, keep everyone in the loop.
Absolutely.
Make it an agenda item?
Add it as a standing agenda item under open meeting.
And, yeah. Keep it all in your hopper and let us...
So, you'd like a vote on that?
Yeah, so regarding, is the board comfortable allowing the zoning administrator to make administrative approvals to insubstantial changes?
Yes.
I'll make a motion to authorize the zoning administrator to do that. Is there a second?
Second.
Any further discussion? All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
That's a vote. Number three, we have a referral to Cape Cod Commission regarding 737 Gifford Street, a proposed 130-foot monopole tower with a vote anticipated.
Yes, and hopefully you all received the sheet, which I have now made disappear.
About the balloon test?
Magically, with the information about the, oh, thank you, cell tower for Gifford Street. So, as the board may or may not be aware, there is a brand-new cell tower proposed for 737 Gifford Street. It is a mandatory referral to the Cape Cod Commission. So, the request tonight is, in just an official capacity by the board, to refer the application to the Cape Cod Commission. They will review it, and then it will be remanded to the zoning board for a vote. The other item that I wanted to bring to the board's attention, and perhaps the public as well, is that there is currently a balloon test scheduled for April 2, between 9:00 a.m. and noon, and that's weather-related, you know, weather-dependent, and each day that the weather is an issue will be the next day. So, there is an option to check a website for that. But, so what we are looking for tonight is a vote by the board to refer to the Cape Cod Commission.
I'll make a motion to refer 737 Gifford Street to the Cape Cod Commission.
Second.
Any discussion on the motion? All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Board discussion. Seeing none. Board updates? Future agenda items, I think it was circulated early regarding our Saturday working group...
Who else is going to that meeting?
Which, which meeting?
The Saturday workshop.
Norine?
Your so far, we've got a bulletin.
Is Town Council?
I don't know.
Wouldn't it depend on the topics we want to discuss? I miss that if we had...
It might, and I was gonna suggest that if there, to make sure that you forward anything you'd like added to the agenda to Norine.
Okay.
Does anyone feel we need Town Council there?
I think you need Town Council.
We, we haven't typically had them in the past. They have come a couple of times, when there was a particular issue, but she called off.
Do you want to extend an invitation?
I, I would.
Yeah? Ask if they'd like to join. Any other future agenda items? All right, seeing none. The next vote, excuse me, the next meeting will be April 4, 2024, 6:00 p.m. at Lawrence School, 113 Lake Eleven, Belmont. Is there a motion to adjourn?
So moved.
Is there a second? All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? We are adjourned at 8:11.